Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. On June ninth, oh, sorry.
Saturday was Flag Day and the 200th anniversary birthday of the United States Army. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to live in Jogga County. This is one of the best places to live, work, and play. Lord, we thank you for our flag that flies over our nation. We thank you for the Stars and Stripes that represent our free country. Guard us and protect us from war and fear. We ask for your blessing for our country and its leaders. Let's pray for the police, first responders, doctors, nurses, and all healthcare professionals. Let's pray for grace to overcome adversity, for hope in times of despair, for our military and veterans. I raised, I was raised that we always stand for the flag and kneel for the fallen. For those who disrespect the flag have never been handed a folded one. Lord, inspire us hope for the future. In Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning. Good morning. On June ninth, as county administrator, I conferred with the Burton Township trustees, requesting that a hearing be held on the liquor license being requested by fifteen zero one five Enterprises LLC, located at fifteen zero one five Kingsman Road, Middlefield, Ohio, CNU six five four nine five zero zero. That is all.
Thank you. Good morning. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office. The next item on the agenda is the Commissioner's Office's requesting the board approve and execute Resolution twenty-five one three-three, requesting the county auditor to establish a new fund called the Dog Shelter Kennel Building and Improvements Fund to account for monies received from the state, county, or any other grant or donation from any organization or the public to be expended for the purposes of acquisition, construction, or improving existing or future fixed assets of the Jogga County Dog Warden related to shelters and/or kennels.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner, if any question?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The county auditor will present an update on the current phishing attack.
Good morning.
Good morning. You get a little sun?
A little bit, yeah. It's my shirt reflection. Chuck Alder, Jogga County Auditor. I've also brought, well, Zach, you want to introduce yourself?
Zach McLeod, ADP, Director of the Department of Advanced Research and Cyber Security.
And then taking up the rear is Frank, who is ADP.
You can hold the chair, Frank, if you want. You're good. All right.
He likes shotgun here. What I would like to do, and this is kind of unprecedented for ADP because we've had these incidences in the past. They've just never risen to the severity that we're experiencing now. So I thought because of, I know I've been texting some of the electeds and keeping people informed, and Frank has been sending to users regular updates of the progress we've made and what we've been experiencing. I thought it was important for the general public to be aware of what the county is experiencing because they're, quite frankly, there's spillover risk. And that's kind of what I want Zach to talk to. We have really two takeaways we'd like the public to understand about what the county has been experiencing across the state. And in that regard, I think those takeaways could make us all safer, both at home with our own internet usage as well as exchanging data with each other. So with that, Zach, if you could give us a little bit of the background of how the events occurred, not necessarily the detail, but the mechanics.
Sure. So we learned this as it progressed. We didn't know all this information right away, but basically the mechanics of it is that there was a conference center that had been, that had become compromised in some capacity. Whether that is through compromised Wi-Fi or a separate Wi-Fi connection that was spun up there that people were connecting to, we're not sure of the exact mechanics of how they became compromised, but we know that there were government entities there, including different counties and county association.
This conference center was just east of Columbus, Seacoal.
And once those users were logged into probably their email or something, their computers, they became compromised. And on that same date, we saw the first phishing emails coming out from one of the compromised entities. And that happened on May twentieth. A week later, we saw a different variation of that same phishing email come out. And then another week later, we saw another variation of the phishing email come out. It had a-
And Zach, when was the conference again?
It was on May twentieth.
Okay, so it, and then the phishing email came out, you said a week later?
Well, the first one came out that day.
That day? Okay, okay.
And then the, which seemed to have been maybe a test. The second one came out a week later from a, from the same county, but a different entity within that county. The third one came out from the association. And that one unfortunately was a large breach. It was a very large contact list that they had got a hold of, and it, from there it spread to many, many counties in the state. I wouldn't be surprised if there's any county that didn't receive the phishing emails, but whether or not they acted on them or not. This was one of the largest widespread events we've ever seen for the state of Ohio. And it really showed that many counties are very unprepared for this type of event.
So when we discovered the anomaly rampant, that's when we became concerned. You know, you're always getting attacked. That's kind of our daily process. But when you're seeing it coming from legitimate county email, not necessarily Jogga County email, this was another county's legitimate email address. That tends to open up a whole nother horizon for us because typically people trust people they know. And especially, this happened to be an engineering group. Engineers communicate with a lot of different entities, with townships, with villages, with, you know, with other government agencies. So the, when they harvested what we believe to be the, a list of attendees at this conference, they then had access to a variety of other legitimate email addresses. And when that occurs, you know, that becomes very dangerous for all of us. One thing I do want to highlight is we had a very early warning detector that was in the Board of County Commissioners's office that alerted us to what we believe was the bow of this event. And that was very helpful for us because it actually, it puts us on heightened awareness. If we interrogate a payload and we recognize the payload was in fact nefarious, we then start scrubbing other mailboxes, is that payload in other people's mailboxes, and we kind of do a mass scrubbing. And that was very good for us because I think it reduced the subset of vulnerability for us. And in doing that, I think Zach and the team, although they spent a lot of hours doing that, and we have some umbrella protection software that is helping us, you know, it takes human interaction. If this were robotic, we would invoke robots, but we can't. It takes people figuring out, is this legitimate or is this in fact, you know, not legitimate? And I will say, you know, just recently, the commissioners approved us moving to a new version of Microsoft Office which allowed for some tools that we didn't have prior. And there was an upcharge for that particular event. Part of that upcharge is the ability of using a sandbox environment, an environment to take payload, put it in an environment that is not on our backbone or network, and it can be interrogated as to the effects that it could cause. And it's in a, basically in a quarantine manner. And by that ability to do that, we saved a lot of potential heartache. Zach, could you address, we did have, I think, three workstations which did click on the payload, but then it became isolated to that environment. Is that correct?
So we had two workstations and one cell phone, yes. And yes, because it was identified so early, we were able to take action early on this. We found in the course of the investigation that the turnaround time from clicking on the link in the email to the time that that email was now compromised and sending out phishing emails was around ninety minutes. And so our ability to detect and the users that were able to notify us as soon as they received that led us to be able to act very quickly. We isolated the infected devices and there was no spread within our environment.
Yeah, and actually that turnaround time of the bad payload is actually unusual. Usually they like to deliver a payload and go dormant to kind of observe, watch, and look for the best opportunity. This was kind of an anomaly from the perspective, it was fast acting, which is scary because if you're not on guard and prepared, you can't get on guard and prepared in time. So the other issue that we wanted to bring to the attention of the board and for the benefit of the general public is when you're traveling, we have created a new policy that we are banning the use of public Wi-Fi. And the reason for that is it is a very high likelihood that one of the available methods that was used was a false front end to a Wi-Fi connection. And people at a conference, of course, you walk around, they tell you what the login is, and you trust them, right? Because you're sitting in their conference facility. It turns out that the particular conference facility has terminated the agreement with their management company subsequent to this event. So perhaps that tells a bit of the story. But the best practice is to either take with you a hotspot from the county, which we have some of. They're fairly inexpensive. Offices should have hotspots in stock where they can give out to employees that are using it remotely, or use your cell phone as a hotspot because that's a trusted cell device. And in doing that, you eliminate the man in the middle or the impressionists that like to pretend to be the good Wi-Fi connector, which they really aren't. And then the second thing that we're recommending-
Can I just interrupt for a second? So if someone's traveling for a conference or whatever, can they go to ADP and like check out a hotspot?
We do have some hot, how many do we have, Frank? We, a few. We have a few. Like in my office, I have, I have three that we have in the auditor's office. So when I go to a conference, I grab a hotspot and take it with me. If somebody else is traveling, we just, and we have a checkout system. You check it out, and there's a unique code in that hotspot, and only you know it, and you identify to it, and it's a clean connection. So if you don't have one, we're happy to loan them as we have them available. But if you're a larger organization, I would recommend that you get a subscription to the hotspot, and ADP can assist with that. The second vulnerability that we witnessed is, which is a real big fad, is QR coding. And the phishing that is done with QR coding, we were joking about this yesterday, is called quishing. I mean, they have to come up with these words, right? It's using a QR code-
They could have done better though, don't you think?
Yeah, they could. They could do much better.
I feel like they should workshop that a little longer.
A little bit. So Zach, you can hold up the QR code. So this is a classic QR code, right?
For Mr. Dvorak.
Yeah, because he did, that was a cheap shot.
It looks like a nice, it looks like a nice puzzle.
That was a cheap shot. So typically people go and they will post those on a wall of a conference facility for the attendees to grab with their phone. And here's the challenge with that. When you use your phone to grab that, you really don't interrogate where you're going. You're trusting that that is sending you to a proper website. In fact, it may not be.
Does this go somewhere?
Yeah, go ahead and try it. Welcome, Russia. Yeah.
Oh, this goes to G I County?
It does go to Jogga. So as you know-
This isn't a quishing. This is my new word.
If you interrogate the URL, then you are connecting and trusting it to verify. But here's the challenge. As you know, you're looking at a URL address, and clever people just simply turn two letters, right? And they become legitimate websites, but not the one you think you're going to. So as a general rule, ADP is warning people to not use QR coding, to not use them unless you are confident the person who's providing that QR code is legitimate. And you know, what can you do? You go on any ad on TV and you see a QR code to go buy something. I don't do it. I was at an auditor's conference two weeks ago, and two of the presenters had QR codes, and I refused to click. I, could you imagine that? I'm, yeah, I'm clicking away at it.
Did you stand up and start yelling?
No, I just went out and got a cup of coffee and I was done. So our advice is don't use public Wi-Fi, especially in airports or restaurants. And only use trusted devices like hotspots on your phone. And two, don't use QR codes if at all possible. Or if you do use them, verify the URL is where you want to go to before you accept it and go to that site. So we spent, and Frank's got the actual numbers, I think the team spent, in one week, we burned a hundred and some hours? Individually? I mean, we worked basically triple shifts. It was crazy. But, you know, we felt, you know, that was a, we had to do that. We had to get ahead of it and stay ahead of it. What I'm happy to report is I was actually coming out of a conference with auditors going to a training class in Sandusky when this occurred, and I posted on the auditor's list server the anomaly. And because I did that, several auditors transmitted to their ADP boards, and they were contacting Frank saying, how do we share data? How do we share who you're blocking so that we're all, we're not all doing duplicate work? So Frank, could you speak a little bit about the coalition that's being-
Actually, Zach's the one running point on that. Essentially, we've created an intelligence sharing group in about ten counties at this point now, and we're all just giving each other information so we can sort of try to stay ahead of the curve here. But yeah, that was Zach's brainchild there.
Okay. What's the, what's your typical response time from a phishing email hitting someone's inbox to you guys, you know, being notified and locking down that domain?
So as soon as we receive the phishing email, we react to it. So ultimately, this depends on the user. If the user reported it as soon as they got it, then we're reacting to it right away. If the user sometimes will report it a month later, unfortunately, we're reacting to it then, right?
Yeah, right, right.
But we've made it a priority that if official alert comes into our system, that's the first thing you take care of.
Yeah, the high vulnerability attack seemed to spike on a Thursday evening. I, I think I received, so I, and I'm much further away from the problem. I mean, I'm obviously getting it after they're working the problem. Frank emailed me, I think at two o'clock in the morning, Friday morning.
Well, that's kind of what I was wondering too. If someone, you know, going to bed and they're like, hey, that's a phishing email, and they flag it, is there somebody at ADP that's, that's real time watching that?
So within the normal hours of the day, yes. Outside of that, we do rely on detection methods to alert us or something.
Yeah, I would recommend if you're, if you're getting your email and you see anything suspicious at all, don't do anything with it until the beginning of the morning where you can send it to the fish alert. Or send it to the fish alert and don't touch it.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, you're going to lose a couple of hours if it's in the evening and till the morning, but that's a good precautionary method. As soon as the other, as soon as I post on the list server, basically all eighty-eight counties were notified. So by Friday morning, before I did my class in the morning in Sandusky, I mean, Frank and I were texting every two minutes that, you know, these counties have been added. This one is a non-issue. So we overworked the problem, so we got a little bit of pushback. You can imagine if, I'll take an example, Ash Dabula County. We saw a breach in Ash Dabula or a inbound from Ash Dabula. We blocked every known government web domain from Ash Dabula County as a precaution. And then we lift them as we can guarantee their security. That is the good practice. It's a bit-
It's over-inclusive, but it's kind of necessary. I understand.
It is. And of course, the affected people that are not part of the problem are a little upset by it. I'd rather deal with that issue than deal with, oh geez, I'm sorry, I didn't block you, and you sent me something bad, and now we're all underwater.
So that was one of the questions I wrote down was what the policy in place is dictating how long and when sort of, you know, these blocks intercounty communications can then resume.
Yep. Frank, I'll let you address that.
I'll turn that one over to Zach, because we have a process that he manages, and it's basically a domain unblock process. So I don't want to get too heavy to it, but essentially the gist is we have a whole series of remediation pieces.
They have to actually send us a report. And it has to indicate if they were compromised, what action they took to become non-compromised. And it has to meet a certain standard. So for example, if a county says, yeah, we found we got hacked, and then we, you know, we just basically rebooted. And but we're not, and then one of the questions is do you use MFA? And if the answer is no, we're not unblocking them. Because they're going to instantly be reinfected. So we actually force, in a sense, an elevation of their security by our questioning. And to some entities, that's considered to be, you know, not to their liking. But again, I would rather be blamed for being over-conservative with that than under-conservative.
Okay. And that's a pro, who approves that process as far as the unblocking goes? Is it Frank or is that?
It starts with Zach. It moves to Frank, and then it moves to me. So ultimately, there are multiple eyes that view it, all evaluating the risk. And, you know, we, we all have to take that accountability for that action.
That makes sense. And then my last question I had was just about recognizing our staff who was flagging these emails. And I know Kristy was one of the people that flagged a phishing attempt.
I thought it wasn't allowed to use your name. So now it's public.
She did something good. She did something good. So I'll, I'm sorry. I'll, she did something bad, I wouldn't bring it up. But she did something good. So I mean, I, my understanding is, you know, something went in her file notifying her. But has there been any sort of talk about recognizing staff, especially these major phishing attempts that are really, I mean, they're really protecting the county and our infrastructure by being proactive in the way that Kristy was?
Yeah, I mean, internally, I do have a process that I use to reward good behavior, just as any elected does with their staff. I, you know, I evaluate, I believe people should be compensated and rewarded for exceptional work, exceptional duty, and exceptionally long work hours. Those are things you can never get back. There's a lot of employees with young families. You're taking them away- You're taking them away from that environment. They're doing it because they care about the work they do. And I think the county and the people within the county get it. They get that we should be rewarding people for that. Trust me, the reward is not excessive. It's probably kind of a joke at times, but it is a way of recognizing them. And I do enter those recognitions into their personnel files.
Yeah.
So that at review, you know, that is obviously something that we consider when we're looking at promotions into certain levels and rewarding people with increase in salaries.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're, you know, across the departments, we're doing something positive for those employees.
I can't speak for other departments. I mean, I heard that there was an accommodation put in Kristi's file. I think that is a great, a great thing to do.
Okay.
She probably won a million dollars, but I don't know that the budget will allow for that.
I just was lucky that day because I was actually on my computer when it actually, the email came in directly. Like I caught it like right away when it came in, sent official alert. And it removes it from your inbox. So if you're not aware, if you never use the official alert button, it will remove the email directly from your email inbox. So once you send that, it takes it away and they start their process. There was a second email that actually came in right after that, actually from someone in Belmont County that said that we had been compromised and that our AT department had been, our AT department had been notified. And I called back to your office right away and said, hey, they are aware of this. This is a legitimate issue. And then I never heard anything more after that. And then Frank started doing what they need to do on their side. And then there was another email that came through that same server that said that another email with another invoice had come through. And so it had gone through another county. So it just continued to keep going. So I'm glad that we were able to protect the county and do what we needed to do.
What, how many counties do we have blocked now?
I think we're around eight or so that are blocked.
Oh my goodness.
So it's still out there, still binging around. We, I suspect this could be related to the Lorraine County breach.
Yeah.
Lorraine County paid a ransomware. They were severely breached still and not in full operation. But this is, this is bad, so.
Approximately how many counties or subdivisions got caught up in the ransomware?
Seems like everyone, right?
Well, we don't know that this was related to ransomware at all. For Lorraine County, we suspect that that was ransomware, but we don't know that for sure. But this was simply a compromise of the email accounts. Usually, things are kind of split up now on the dark web. They have what are called initial access brokers. And what they're doing is stealing the initial access and then they sell that to somebody else. And then they're the ones that get in and deploy the ransomware. So this might have been an initial access broker that was just trying to steal credentials. And then the worst stuff, it may be still to come. We may find that in a couple of months, that all of a sudden, all these counties start getting hit with ransomware because they were compromised.
So we have produced a very small document for you to-
Yeah, nineteen pages.
Yeah. This is a public available document. We did regat some elements to it. Yes. So we just thought because of this, it was important for the public to be aware as well because we do do business with the public and we don't want them to be compromised any more than we want other government agencies. So you're free to share this versus the other documents you receive confidentially through the ADP board.
Well, thanks for coming in and explaining all that for us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now I know what quishing is.
Yeah, quishing.
Trying to bring that into my vocabulary.
Good morning.
Good morning. No quishing for me?
No, no quishing.
Your name?
My name is Shane Jar with the county engineer's office, and I am here to present items four, five, and six. Item four, the county engineer's office is requesting the board award a bid to Ryanick Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, County Highway twelve, sections B through G in Newberry, Russell, and Chester Townships in the amount of one million two hundred twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. As they represented the lowest and best bid, and the bid bond submitted shall serve as the performance bond for this project.
That came in under your estimate, right?
That one was, I think that was five thousand over our estimate.
Oh, that one was?
I think that was one-
No, that's the next one.
Isn't the next one?
Well, the estimate here is a hu- one million two hundred twenty thousand.
Oh, no, you're right. This one came over the ne- I had it backwards. So this one just came just over the estimate.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item four.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, the engineer's office is requesting the board award a bid to Ryanick Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmount Road, County Highway sixteen, section C through E in Newberry and Russell Township in the amount of six hundred ninety thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars. As they represented the lowest and best bid, the bid bond submitted shall serve as the performance bond for this project.
I move to approve item number five.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And the last item for me today, item number six, engineers office requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, increasing the contract with Ryanick Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Auburn Road, County Highway four, sections R through U in Charton Township in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Jane, can you talk about what necessitated this change order?
The amount of pavement repairs after we milled the road off exceeded our estimate. And it's somewhat of an unforeseen condition. After we mill off the surface, we assess what's there. We make our estimates at design time and it was a little more than we expected.
A little worse than I thought. All right. I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
Mr. Brinkley? Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Good.
You too.
Linda Granby with the county planning commission. First, number seven, the planning commission is requesting the board approve and execute the final plat for Coldwater Reserve. It's a replat of sublots fifteen and sixteen to create subplot fifteen R. It's located in Hampden Township, owned by the Bertoloni's, and it's going to be a consolidation total of six acres. It was approved at the June planning commission meeting.
I move to approve item number seven.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
So we've gone to the next one?
Yes, please.
Next one, our planning commission is requesting the board approve and execute the final plat for Lake Lucerne subdivision. Replat of subplot four and five in Block M. And it's going to create subplot four R with a consolidated total of one point one acres. And the lots are owned by Christopher James Heinen. And it was also approved at the June planning commission meeting.
Okay, I move to approve item number eight.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
Mr. Brinkley?
Yes.
Oh, you used to use a Sharpie for these too?
Yes.
Okay. This is my first time doing this. Very exciting moment for me. I think, I know, and I'm good. I'm just, I'm not used to using black. It's all blue.
It's always weird. Switch gears.
Give me a couple seconds.
Take your time.
Let this thing. Let it bake for a minute.
Okay.
Hi.
Good. Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Miller with Water Resources. Here to ask the board to approve and execute a service contract with Missions Communications. They perform monitoring and alarm systems at like all of our locations. And the contract, I'd like to make it retroactive to May first. That's when their new pricing came out. So that all invoices in that time period will cover that new pricing. And then through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, in the amount not to exceed forty thousand, that's thirty-five K for wastewater and five thousand for water.
So what did the new pricing go up or down?
A few things stayed the same, but a couple items went up.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so this is under fifty thousand dollars, so we don't need ADP approval on this?
ADP did approve it. There is ADP approval on the contract.
But not, not board approval?
We don't have to go to bid for it.
Okay, got it. I'll make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
Mr. Brinkley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Credit card.
Yay, credit card stuff.
We haven't had one in a while, so it's not, no. I would try and like consolidate them all together. So item number ten is a resolution twenty-five one thirty-four, which is a seventh amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards to include a new credit union visa for Department of Aging and some additional employees for job and family services to cards. So that's number ten. And then eleven and twelve are the applications for authorizations for weekly use of those credit cards for the Department of Aging and for those additional employees for job and family services. And then number thirteen is the certification we addressed to the county auditor and mistress for the quarterly use on that new credit union visa for Department of Aging.
All right, so I'll move to approve items number ten through thirteen.
Second.
Mr. Brinkley?
Aye.
Mr. Brinkley?
Yes.
All right, number fourteen, I have done this line. I just don't know what happened.
I think we can continue. I want to read number fourteen.
The commission office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-five to ratify an amendment to Article four, section four point two, to the Code of Regulations of the Northeast Ohio Airwide coordinating the U.S. NAWAC that's designating one of its seats specifically reserved for the county engineer.
Thank you. At this time, is the engineer in the audience?
Yes, sir.
This is Andy Hutt, engineer. And just want to stress the importance of having an engineer on the NOACA board and take it away, Andy.
Few thoughts. Our other member counties have their engineer on the board as voting members now and have-
All of them, do you say?
Uh, three of the four, I believe all of them.
Okay.
County's a little different, being that they're a different form of government, but engineer is there too. Uh, it's paired. Allows a voice that supports the taxpayers of rural Amish.
Can you get the microphone so it's all just in?
Sorry, yeah. Uh, because a lot of our constituent counties are more urban than rural. So representation is as difficult as it is already. It allows roads, bridges, safety concerns to be paramount from the point of technical expertise and experience that the engineer brings to that table. It's something that is important. It has to be there all the time in the forefront as a voting member. Even though we may be outvoted, it is important to represent. We may have nine percent, I think we have something like nine percent of the lane miles in the organization of the metropolitan organization. And we only get four percent about the funding. So chasing, supporting, and advocating for funding that we are due is one of the important things, most important things that that seat has to represent every time there is a vote. And if not, have an alternate that is directed and understanding of what the desire is for Jaw County. Also, I'll just personally state that I do have a lot of experience in the other counties, Lake County, Cuyahoga County, having worked for the Department of Transportation prior to this engagement. And a lot of the areas that are discussed that are not really transportation focused are more environmental sometimes and sometimes doesn't seem, that's in my opinion personally, that's not where NOACA was originally directed back in the, I think in the sixties it was formed. I can recall professors in college that were members and directors of ODOT and NOACA discussing the new Cleveland Stadium from the old municipal stadium. And some of the conversations we're having involved with about Brown Stadium. It is important to be involved and to raise a voice for or against a decision that the area-wide benefit may be voted upon that doesn't serve Jaw County or may. It basically have a saying, you really, it's like anything, you can't complain if you don't vote. You have to be there to vote and you have to be there with a knowledge and understanding of what you're voting on. I've been all over the bridges and roads of Northeast Ohio, having been on all the ones in Lake County that are state-owned, all the ones in Cuyahoga County are state-owned. A lot of Cuyahoga County bridges, all the bridges in Jaw County, state and county bridges, I've been under or on and been responsible for. That kind of expertise and technical experience is what needs to be, in my opinion, represented. And other counties have that.
Now with your credentials, like where did you go to college?
Well, Cleveland State and Lakeview Community College. And credentials, yeah, one of the hardest in the nation to become a county engineer is the requirement to be a professional surveyor, which I am and was first, and professional engineer. With each of those licenses, there's four years of experience that is required prior to getting that license. And eight hours of testing each license. So sixteen hours of testing, eight years of experience, plus a four-year degree in engineering or surveying is quite a track record. I'll throw in a CDL license there too, classic tanker, doesn't plow snow. And that's kind of what we do around here too. And you know what? Snow goes on bridges and there's ways to plow bridges, there's ways to salt, there's ways to brine. It's called transportation. It's called commerce. Trucks don't move, America doesn't move, and that's our number one job. And if trucks can get to where they need to go, guess what? The Amish can get there, you can get there, cars can get there. And that's, that's a lot of technical expertise comes through experience. And been doing this for quite a while. I had some great mentors from Mr. Phillips who started me off in Jaw County to Mr. Patel. I was on four eighty before it was open to traffic, just testing concrete and looking at, watching bridges be built. It was nineteen eighty-seven, so before that, my old man was this Korean War CB, so I've been kind of constructional my life, if you can imagine. Didn't always like it. But that's a little summary of the qualifications and I believe the necessity to have that level involved in NOACA. Engineers have always been involved in NOACA. It would represent Jaw County well to have that same level.
And as far as where we are in the process, the NOACA board approved this change to the Code of Regulations on Friday. So now where we are in the process is the individual counties need to ratify the change that's already been approved by the NOACA board. So that's the step we're taking today. I mean, I think it's unfortunate. In some ways, we can't just add you as one seat and have four seats. But based on how the Code of Regulations are currently written, GIC County doesn't have the population to meet that threshold for another seat, so that's why we need to make that, make that change.
And I and I think, you know, focus is um all the other counties in NOACA has their engineer as a voting member. And all Joga County wants is the same as the other counties have. And we want our engineer to be a voting member representing Joga County with all his credentials, with all his historic knowledge of roads and bridges.
Mm-hmm.
So uh.
I'll make a motion to approve item number fourteen.
Second.
Commissioner Rick.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Thanks for coming in, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That'll be good.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the compensation of a public employee pursuant to ORC one two one dot two two goal one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rick.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Oh yeah.
I know your term will be at ten twenty-two.
Without even asking for any additional compensation or anything and taken over publicly funded childcare and PRC, which is our prevention, retention, and contingency programs. And done so with our head held high, bearing down and learning those programs. And with that being said, her staff loves her. And again, she's a true leader and is without a doubt deserving of a merit raise.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve that merit raise.
Second.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Lisa.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to O R C one two one dot two two goal two. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Who's going with us?
Uh, Chris Carroll.
Okay.
I'm gonna hand you in after I've talked to him.
Okay. All right. Okay, return at ten thirty-seven?
No action, just informative.
Okay, so my item is about the letter to the Ohio Department of Health regarding the operation and maintenance septic inspections, which I think, is that this one here?
Yes.
Oh, no, that's not it, that's the property. Did you have a chance to review this?
Yes.
Okay, and are you okay with this letter, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a, do I need a motion to execute the letter?
Yes, there would be a motion to approve execute the letter to the Ohio Department of Health regarding operation and maintenance of septic inspection program.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
I don't know, just a stack for a few minutes.
Oh, we need the whole stack, okay.
Yeah, that was just my extra.
And then once you go through some of those signings, the other thing I wanted to talk about was House Bill three thirty-five, Commissioner. So I can talk and sign, can you listen and sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Right ahead.
So House Bill three thirty-five was recently introduced by Representative Dave Thomas out of Ashtria, Bula, and that would eliminate inside millage for counties, municipalities, and schools. So I asked Adrian a little bit about this. How much money did we receive from inside millage? And he said it is approximately eleven point five million dollars. So we would lose from the county general fund about eleven and a half million dollars a year if House Bill three thirty-five would pass. Our county sales tax is currently at one percent, so the state's sales tax is at five point seven five. With that one percent, it obviously brings Jaga up to six seventy-five. We are able to go all the way up to eight percent sales tax to make up that difference, but we'd only have to increase by an additional point five, six percent. So at current collections, that would generate about twelve million dollars in revenue. And then related to that is the constitutional amendment, which would eliminate all property taxes if passed. So that would eliminate forty million dollars in revenue for the county. And if that passed, we would need perhaps up to one percent in sales tax to offset that issue. So CCAO is requesting that counties submit testimony regarding House Bill three thirty-five. And so I wanted to gauge your interest. I can draft something for you to review if you're interested in that. Because, you know, obviously, we'd have to, we'd have to look at our core government services that are paid by the general fund and then figure out if we want to do any, if we want to cut discretionary spending, if there'd be a hiring freeze, if there'd be possible layoffs, or if we just want to make it up with sales tax. And so there, you know, there'd be impact to the, to the county and the county government. I personally think that the, the solution is, I mean, they, the state needs to, the state legislator needs to just completely deregulate. Because so many of the things, why county government is as big as it is, is because of these unfanned mandates that are put on the legislator on the counties. But that would be a very unsexy process to unravel. And what's a lot sexier is just to say, we're gonna get rid of property taxes altogether.
Well, I've been in contact with Commissioner Casey Kozlosky in Nashville, Bill, we talk about.
Oh, nice.
About every two weeks on this subject. And I think, you know, some people are excited about no property tax, no this, no that. But if you'd be paying for it in another avenue, and, you know, we'd have to raise sales tax and raise this and raise that, eleven and a half million dollars, it's hard to come up real quickly overnight.
Again, that's just the general fund. So all the other departments that have levies, you know, if they outlaw property taxes as the collection method for that, you'd have to come up with a way to fund those as well.
Yeah, so I'm uncomfortable with what they are proposing in Columbus on this. Because it's gonna be, there'll be more levies ever before. It takes me back to when Governor Kasich was there, we lost our local government fund. And the ones that were creative, you know, got through it. And to take away funds from local government is detrimental, so.
No, just to specify, with House Bill three thirty-five, it would not take the inside millage away from the townships.
Okay.
So they would, the townships would still maintain their inside millage. That's at least my understanding.
So it'd be a heck of a transition.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm kind of a taxationist, theft kind of gal, but as far as taxes go, I mean, I think income tax is the absolute worst and property taxes, at least you're paying the government services that are related to your property as far as law enforcement and so forth. And I understand certainly these issues with the reavow and with seniors being on fixed incomes and, you know, things like the home set exemption and so forth are ways to handle that. And I think they need to look at, you know, setting a cap or doing something as far as how, how much property taxes can increase in any given year. But I will, I'll work on writing testimony that, that just lets the legislator know how this would impact G I B County.
Right.
I mean, and frankly, it wouldn't be as bad for us as it would be for some counties because, you know, we have a lot, a lot of room to go as far as our sales tax goes.
Yeah, I think I'll do a little bit to reconstruct a letter, we're off to Columbus, we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good. And that, that's all I have for board discussion.
Okay, go ahead. Is your timer ready?
It is.
Item eighteen, public comment.
Yeah.
You sure can. There's three minutes, state your name and where you're from.
Yes, sir. Hi, good morning, my name is Xavier Rivera, here from Cleveland, taking a half day from my job privilege. Not many working people are afforded, but I will have to make up those hours later as I'm not being paid to be here today. I'm here today to ask you to cancel the ICE contract that the county has and close the detention facility that we have here. As of January, dozens of people were detained here after a series of arrests in northeast Ohio where twenty people were arrested. The ACLU has requested information from the county about the conditions and the identities of these people, but has been rebuffed. This is a failure of Jaga County to be transparent to the people who reside here as well as to the people who reside around it. I ask you this in the wake of our president admitting what people like myself have already known and have been saying for years. He said last week, our farmers are being hurt badly. They have good workers that have worked for them for twenty years. They're not citizens, but turned out to be great. We can do something about that. In a lot of instances, the people that he speaks about are in fact undocumented. This is a blatant admission that the focus of the deportation efforts that have been ongoing since his inauguration have not been on people who we've claimed are violent criminals, but ordinary undocumented people who work hard to provide for the abundance that we see in this country. If their goal is to remove violent criminals, why is ICE showing up in elementary schools, at Home Depot parking lots, and at immigration court hearings? The people there are not violent criminals. They're hardworking, decent people, and are the backbone of this country. They are taken advantage of by business owners and wealthy people. Despite what the media likes to tell us, they use limited state resources, and they are not violent criminals, they are our neighbors. They live on the margins of society and provide for us. By maintaining this ICE contract, the county is complicit with the violence and the ongoing attack on undocumented people who are not dangerous to our decadent, excuse me, decadent society, but the backbone of it. As someone who is descended from a Mexican immigrant, I'm not surprised. He only became a citizen in the past few years, but before his marriage to my grandmother, he was undocumented. He's not a criminal, he's not violent, and he is not unique. He was a teamster, and he served in the Korean War. My dad, his son, has been a UAW member my entire life. Again, he is not a violent criminal, and he is not unique. Most undocumented people are like this, who just.
Your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
You can submit this to us via email though, if you'd like, your own testimony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. What's our email, Christine, to, for the, just for the commissioners, the general email? Commissioners at, oh, Commissioner?
Commissioner at Jaga dot O H dot gov.
Okay, did you get that Commissioner at Jaga dot O H dot gov?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and then what word is that?
I think it would be C O in front of that, C O dot J.
No, no, we don't have that information.
Ah, okay, sorry. Anybody else have a public comment?
Howard, South Russell Village. This Saturday, there's gonna be the fly-in at the Jogga County Airport where the young people are gonna come and find out about airplanes. Fortunately, we still have an airport. The people are there, there's gonna be another program in probably in August. It starts at seven o'clock in the morning and runs to eleven. We can look at the helicopter that they fly the poor people around in. And I strongly recommend that people come to the fly-in, similar to the, we having the Liberty Camp in July at Shigagami where we, we bring a hundred youngsters onboard to tell them about the United States of America. Thank you very much.
And don't forget the pancake breakfast at the airport.
Thanks, Jim, what's that?
They have a pancake breakfast too, on the twenty-first.
At the fly-in?
That's normal, yes. And at least we're gonna have, we only have one paid employee at the airport. So at least we'll still be able to do a good job because you guys almost eliminated the airport, thank you.
Eliminating the airport's a little different than not paying for a private diner.
The sheriff, sheriff could have taken over the airport, same, the sheriff could have taken over the dog park.
I, I welcome that personally, I think you would do a bang-up job.
Okay, next, uh.
Skip Claypool, Chester, and I just wanted to raise and make a comment about the ratification, the bylaw change for Noaka to be Ralph's alternate on Noaka, full disclosure. And I'm very sad about this ratification because it actually is detrimental to Jaga County. What has been said is that we need a county engineer at the table, that's true, and we've always had our county engineer at the table. They've always been named an alternate, they have full voting rights when they go to the, to the meetings, and they've always been able to do that. In addition to that, commissioners have always interacted, and you still do, I'm sure, with the county engineer on a regular basis so you know all the issues, you know what he's concerned about, and so on and so forth. This move demonstrates to me a lack of integrity. One of the commissioners who's likely impacted is not in this meeting. This board never had a public discussion about doing this. It was two commissioners from this board who went to Noaka and made a request for this bylaw change, circumventing the public process and hearing what the case should be. This board should be going and asking Noaka to add a fourth seat, which is totally dual. When Noaka started, it was, there was three commissioners from every county, there was a contract, and that was a balanced arrangement for all the counties who were involved. At that time, it was. At that time, it was seven counties, now it's down to five counties. There should be more balance, there is zero balance right now in NOACA. And unless we promote and we fight for that, then, um, we will always be at a disadvantage on that board. This actually removes a voice, the county commissioner voice, from that board. And I think that's detrimental to this county. And I, I'm, I'm very sad that this happened, that, that the, the two county commissioners today voted to, um, degrade our voice at the NOACA board.
This, uh, this action today was actually started when, uh, Mary Samidi and, uh, Tracy Jamison was here. So it's, this has been trying to get along, trying to do this for twelve years or more.
We tried to add a seat, not take a seat away. I was there, so I know that.
And for us, but according to the bylaws, for Giaga County to get another vote of four, we'd have to have over a hundred thousand people in, with population here.
That's a new feeling by the votes.
And I don't think, and I don't think that, I'm talking, sir! And that's, I don't think anybody would welcome a hundred thousand more people.
But you got your factory, Jim.
No.
You don't have your factories on.
Are we timed up?
Yes.
Next.
Hi, my name is Elsie Tarsi, I live at ten ninety one Sherwood Drive in South Russell, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to reiterate what Skip said, that we do need another seat on NOACA. And you should be advocating for that and not going along with NOACA or promoting having less representation. I agree that the county engineers, the, uh, the county engineers should have a seat there, but so should all the commissioners. If we don't want to do that, I also advocate that we get out of NOACA and have our, and go in with Lake County and get other counties so that we are more represented. Giaga County is rural, we are not urban like Kaahoga County, and they have fifty-one percent of the vote all the time in NOACA. So we really have little representation on that board. That being said, I also would like to say, I have been trying to reach Andrew, I have spoken with Andrew Misha about Liberty Camp USA being part of the two fifty celebration. And I have had little response from him. Uh, Liberty Camp USA, as you know, because your children have gone there, has, uh, repri- has taught hundreds of children about our constitution and the founding of our country. And we do it through reenactors, and we teach them to history. It, it's our purpose. And we should be represented in this celebration. So I'm asking the commissioners to help me become part of that, help us get Liberty Camp USA as part of that celebration. I don't know what to do, I've spoken with him, I've talked with Ruth Kavanaugh about it, and I've talked with Mark Porter about it, but nobody has gotten back to me to include us in the meetings. So if there's anything you can do, if you have any, uh, recourse, I, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your opinion. Anybody else?
Christine Stenchel from Monson. Um, the NOACA issue, which we've talked about here, I agree with Skip and Elsie, um, it's never going to be fair and balanced. We're never going to have representation. Whatever numbers we might add, NOACA als- always raises the bar so that they're always going to be in charge of what we do here in Giaga. So, but we don't have an equal say. Um, I've been to only one meeting, but it was very much that we're going to tell you what to do, you sit here and listen to what we say, and that's just the way we do things. So, you know, Giaga is very different, and we, I guess for years it's been suggested that we do, um, match up, and, and we have to have five counties apparently to be able to be part of NOACA. But we don't have people that fit the same, um, the same personality of Giaga with another rural county. So I would just back that up, that we need to not let NOACA dictate to us what we have to do because we'll never be able to have an equal say.
Thank you. Yeah, we wouldn't be losing any vote at all, we still have three votes from Giaga County.
Right, but it's not going to match their fifty-one percent ever, is my point.
Never, never.
No, so, so I, but they make that rule, and then it's, um, you know, it's like the Electoral College. It's that kind of idea. We're not going to have equal representation because we're, we're a different kind of county.
Thank you.
Commissioner, what's that, Christine? I know, because didn't Kaahoga used to have less seats on the NOACA board? And then it expanded to include more. Maybe you know that, Christine.
They cut seats. Cleveland had seats at the table.
That's what happened, so Cleveland added additional seats. When did that happen?
I think, uh, one, eight, nine years.
I think it was eight, yeah, it's about-
Yeah, well, I've got the entire history in a document I can send it to if you're interested.
Not that interested. But I mean, I, I just knew that there was a point where GI County had a bigger voice at the table, and at some point the commissioners sacrificed that.
Well, twenty-five, thirty years ago, there was engineers that really, uh, had the power to go over their projects, or if there was money left over, well, does this county need this or that? Because they, they can match it or, or whatever. So that's twenty-five, thirty years ago. But those days are gone, I mean, so.
Can I, since I entered three minutes, can I add one?
No, it's over.
I think, I think it's, it's important to look at the history. I think it is, it's very interesting to see how it evolved and changed and how that happened. I think a lot of us were just not paying attention, and we didn't think it was going to be a big deal.
Okay.
Just wanted to add that. It is really important.
Any more public comment? Hearing none, I make your motion to return.
Second.